I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Southwest Looking Board of Education to order. It is September 19th, Thursday, 6:00 PM in the board meeting room. We'd like to recognize all of our visitors here and online. If you'd like to please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Our flag, nation, to the God of the United States of America, and to the republic where we should stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones, do you call the roll, please?
Sure. Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Zani.
Here.
Mrs. Engel.
Here. We have a quorum. You can continue. Public participation, we have one person, Mr. Ford, would have come to the microphone, give us your name, address, and then Mr. Jones will keep time for you. We'll have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Corey Ford. I live at 701 Osborne Drive, and I am still the Assistant Director of the National School Board Leadership Council.
Real quickly, are you speaking as an individual on behalf of that organization?
I am speaking as an individual.
Okay.
And ask for any affiliated organizations, so...
I just wanted to clarify.
I might run out of time. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is report card season again. I would be remiss if I didn't correct some information. This year's report card does not have the disclaimer indicating that three of the six reported components were impacted by misreported data. That disclaimer didn't stop the administration from briefing you on it, as it was gospel last year. You were told that a fix-it ticket was submitted to lockup for misreported data. In his email, responding to my record request for that ticket and other related records on October 2nd, 2023, Mr. Greg Rhodes indicated that there were no records matching my request. Some of these stories aren't lining up. Tonight, you'll likely be briefed that our district exceeds state standards. A recent paper entitled "Mapping the Standards by the National Assessment of Educational Progress" reported that Ohio's 4th grade language arts standards are the fourth lowest in the nation. 4th grade math was the third lowest, beating out only Virginia and Puerto Rico among the states and territories. When we celebrate exceeding state standards, we are engaging and navel gazing. Last week, Andrew Brunner, Senator of Ohio's 19th District and Chair of Ohio Senate Education Committee, noted in an interview that to score proficient on state standardized tests, students must answer 50 to 55% of the questions correctly. The average citizen would not consider getting the right answer half the time proficient. The state standards of proficiency are equal to guessing answers on true or false questions. Yet, every year, we celebrate. Research suggests that students that are not reading on grade level by the end of 3rd grade are more likely to struggle with schoolwork, or more likely to drop out of school and have less than 20% chance of ever catching up with their peers before finishing school. Despite over a quarter of our 3rd graders not reading proficiently, you promoted 100% of them in 4th grade. Over 80% of our 2nd graders not on track reading in 1st grade remain that way in 2nd grade. That's four out of five. On July 18th, you came out of an executive session convened to discuss the employment of public employees. Performance evaluations of the superintendent and treasurer are public records, and deliberations on them are public business and not subject to exemption under the OMA. When you adjourn to discuss the employment of employee, you are not adjourning to discuss his or her performance. I'll be reaching out to you more about that later. Upon reconvening, you stated, and I quote, "The board conducted our annual evaluation of Dr. Perkins and has found her performance this past year to be exemplary." Fine. But then you said, and I quote, "Under her leadership, student achievement continues to improve. Notable increases in many of the district test scores," unquote. Did you have the same test data that I have that shows 2/3 of our state testing measures are below 2019 levels? Did you know that half of our test scores went down from last year? 50% is proficient, though. That's the standard. The district's performance is the superintendent's performance, and I don't blame the teachers, and I do not, like you like to project, blame the superintendent. She's going to do what she does. You are supposed to hold her responsible. Her performance is the district's performance, and I find it odd that you can do a performance evaluation on superintendent two months before you have state data. Our data doesn't show what you said it said. Thank you. If you need charts, graphs, and references, I have them. Good night.
We have an adoption of the agenda. I'd like to ask that we, on presentations, if we could move our ECO Warriors up first, because some of them have to be able to be... leave and not stay for the rest of the meeting. So if we could make a motion to adopt the agenda with the ECO Warrior presentation first in presentations.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. All right, ECO Warriors.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, board members and everyone that's come today. It has been a long time, and hopefully everyone had a great summer. As you may know, we are the ECO Warriors and hoping to plant trees around our campus. And as we progress through our project, we are finding that it is not easy. Such a big project like this, we have learned so much, and we have improved so much. And we can't wait to let you know about our reassuring plan this year.
Does this change it?
Yeah, sorry.
As kind of up to where we are right now, as we reach the fall, we're hoping to get our planting done. Right now, we're planting 1,500 trees, and we'll talk more about that later. But as of right now, we're guaranteed one tree planted in October. And then hopefully, with weather permitting, we're going to plant the rest in November along Route 40. The only issue that we're facing right now mostly is because of the weather. As most of us know, we're in a drought right now. And if it doesn't right between now and November, we have an issue with like, we can plant them due to the health of the tree. The district has made a promise to water the plants, but it doesn't replace the rain. And then with 1,500 trees, they've made a promise to... They kind of do the heavy lifting for us, so they're going to be digging the holes and placing the trees. And then we'll have volunteers who will film the watch, fill the holes, mulch them, hook cages around there and do staking to protect them from wildlife. And then for our volunteers, we're hoping to get a lot of community involvement. We've been talking to Mr. Perkins, our school administrators, and we're working with the NHS sporting teams and other school organizations.
So as mentioned earlier, our main partner is 1,500 Trees. They have promised to give us 25 Evergreens that we will be able to plant along Smoke Road on the mounds that were pre-prepared for trees. And as of right now, we are not sure how many trees they will be able to supply for us for Route 40, but it should be majority of the project. And then some of our other partners include the Columbus Zoo. We got a $1,050 grant. We intend to spend that on the plants and shrubs that will go in between the trees. We have ODNR, which was our consultant for finding native trees. And then Garmin Miller, our architects, who have contacts for plants and trees to help us and have helped us with the layout and giving us the site map.
So here's our updated timeline. So for the month of October, 1,500 Trees is visiting our site to figure out the exact planting spots in which trees will suit our site best with the type of soil that we have. It will all be native trees. November will be the plaque reveal. We've also been asked to participate on a panel at the Columbus Zoo for the Team ECO Summit. December will be our second wave of fundraising, opening for plaques and for keep up on our first phase. Then it'll be Warrior Way. 1,500 Trees invited us to their celebration event in Marangville, and also we'll be getting 25 Evergreens for Smoke Road from them as well. For spring, we will be doing the Gross or Grads for Class of 2025 fundraising drive. We will be planting Evergreens, and we will be fundraising for following phases for the fall. So as we noted, I guess we haven't done this, we made $8,000 off of... Yeah, we were very excited about this. We made $8,000 based from all the plaque donations. We wanted to thank the board, of course, for donating. That was much appreciated. And the Southwest Looking Education for the retiring teachers, that's very much appreciated. We got a lot of community support from companies, individuals, and all those things. All of these funds will go towards the trees on 40 and Smoke, like all of our pollinators, because 1,500 Trees has promised to help us majority with the trees. But with our money, we're using for shrubs, pollinators, basically everything that's going to fill for that. And then any future funding is going to go towards our next round of plaques and trees along Warrior Way.
All right, and we are hoping to hold our recognition ceremony on November 3rd at 3:00 PM in front of the Watkins Memorial High School. And if weather permits, we would like to hold it outside. And we, at that time, will be unveiling pavers and honoring our donors. And we are hoping to get a lot of volunteers involved, such as the NHS or people who need volunteer hours. And we would like to invite all of the board members and everyone else including here to be there during the ceremony if you guys are available. And, and as you may know, we have a lot to do still. And to achieve all of this and to be successful, we need lots of cooperating hands, not just like our community, our partners that we work along with as well. And we are so lucky and grateful to have such kind community and staff members who are supporting us always. And to make this project more successful, we would greatly appreciate more involvement and support. And we are, we are aesthetic about this year because we have planned so much. And we would like, we would like to say thank you to everyone who's hearing us out. Have a great evening.
Good job.
You did a great job. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Keep up the great work.
All right, how about our Building Continuous Improvement Plan, Potasko Elementary? Thank you.
All right, good evening. Tonight, I'd like to share, obviously, our Building Continuous Improvement Plan as well as progress that we've made since we presented our plan last year. So I'll start with our state report card information first. So our rating on this year's report card was once again a four, which exceeds state standards. We improved from a rating of three to four on achievement and remain consistent with a rating of three on early literacy, which meets state standards. I'd like to point out a couple of things about the early literacy rating. First, our 3rd grade ELA proficiency percent has increased from 58% in 2022 to 71.2% in 2024. And we've also jumped from an overall early literacy component score of 62.5% in 2022 to 73% in 2024. So I attribute these increases over the past three years to our focus on implementing best reading practices, intentionally grouping students based on data, and addressing specific gaps in student learning. The last component of the report card is gap closing, which we again received a rating of five, significantly exceeding state standards. The gap closing component is a measure of the reduction in educational gaps for student subgroups. So when I look at our progress as a building, I'm most proud that we stuck with our vision that we've had since we started, continue to learn and grow as professionals and do what's best for kids. And I feel like the data is supporting that our efforts are working. So now, as far as the CIP goes, the first part focuses on student learning. We continue to provide professional development and opportunities for collaboration on the science of reading approaches and using student data to inform instructional planning. The district continues to do a fantastic job of structuring waiver days to provide specific professional development in areas that have helped our teachers continue to grow as strong reading instructors and data analysts. We continue to partner with Dr. Stephanie Stoller, who has helped us immensely as we work to creatively target instruction at students' individual levels. Potasko, our building now has four staff members who have been trained at Orton Gillingham, and we have a fifth staff member going through the training this school year. This year, we've revamped our approach to teacher-based team meetings. We've moved to looking at MTSS through a grade-level lens, which is allowing grade-level teams more time to collaborate, discuss data, and make informed instructional decisions. We received positive feedback from our staff about these changes and look forward to seeing student growth in both reading and math. The last, the last action step for student learning talks about using vertical trend data to determine root cause of instructional gaps and develop action steps. And last year, at this time, I shared that last year was the, the third school year that we would have been back to kind of neighborhood schools, so we were waiting to get our data back. And we have, so we had our first BLT meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we just started digging into that three-year OST data as a leadership team to determine our strengths, areas of focus, and problems to, problem solving to address gaps. So we also continue to hear positive feedback during our second year of implementing the 95% phonics program. And this year's Fall Acadian Status is really exciting and encouraging as we continue to implement the program. And then if you could go to student experiences. We're continuing to find ways to provide students with a wide variety of experiences in an effort to increase background knowledge and provide exposure to different fields, content, and learning paths at the elementary level. We're planning again to include an author illustrator visit, performance by the Columbus Children's Theater, STEM assembly provided by The Works. And our students, actually, in a few weeks in October, our 3rd graders are attending the Columbus Symphony Orchestra performance. And of course, we still plan on inviting parents in to discuss different careers. We really want to provide as many experiences as possible, especially for those students who might not otherwise have the opportunity to do so outside of school. The next part of our student experiences centers around the implementation of PBIS. This year, our PBIS team will continue to focus on data collection for student behavior and targeting interventions. Our PBIS team will also focus on learning more about trauma-informed practices, and PBIS team members will share these topics monthly at our staff meetings. We continue to administer a tier fidelity inventory that assesses how we are doing overall with PBIS and allows the team to address specific areas of the inventory. We continue to use Character Strong to teach SEL and focus on a character trait each month. Students from each class are recognized monthly for demonstrating the focus character trait. We've also been incorporating, again, quotes, challenges, and reminders about these traits on daily announcements to reinforce the importance of these skills so students can make those connections. And the last action steps for student experiences discusses attendance and community partnerships. We received positive feedback. If you remember from last year, we started the Attendance Matters Surprise Days, and we've gotten positive feedback from that and look forward to continuing that this year. We've also, we've reached out to DJ Popo to see if she's available for another dance party. We're still waiting to hear back, so hopefully she's available. Community partnerships continue to grow as we are able to provide many services and resources for our families. We hosted our second annual Back to School Bash this August. Last year, 15 community and district resources attended, and this year, 23 community and district resources attended. It was a really, really nice turnout. So families were provided with free school supplies, clothes, and books, and had access to organizations such as Potasko United Methodist Church, Triple P, Fostering Further, Looking Memorial Hospital, and the Potasko Library. And while our Back to School Bash is the biggest example of community partnerships, we'll also work with families to provide wraparound services and resources as needed throughout the school year. So overall, I believe we're continuing to get better each day and look forward to providing future updates on student learning and student experiences. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Building Continuous Improvement Plan, Watkins Memorial High School.
Good evening, everyone. How about those ECO Warriors, huh?
That was all right.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Wall, for your continued leadership with the group. Really impressed with those girls. Every time we sit down and meet, they're just, they care so much about our, about our school and our campus, so it's, it's great to see. We're very proud of the high school to have earned four and a half stars on the state report card, but there's always room for improvement. There's always room for growth. So let's look at our CIP here and some of the things that we have in place this year to continue to grow. This year, we have a focus on our TBTs to be a little bit more intentional about what we're doing in our meetings and how we're using each other to collaborate and inform teaching practices so that we can continue to improve. The third strategy there talks about how we're using data in our TBTs. So we took the data that Tom Pride provided us from our tested subjects last year, broke those down by individual students for individual teachers so that they can use that data to not only look at how students performed, but also look at what topics are being more heavily tested on those state tests to make sure that we're not using our time improperly when we're, you know, focusing on standards and those types of things. So those are important things with our TBTs this year. Our professional growth plans, again, this year, every teacher has a literacy goal on their PGP so that we're constantly working on literacy with our students regardless of the content area. If you go ahead to the next slide, please. For our student experience this year, one thing we're looking at doing is enhancing our course offerings to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students and potential workforce goals for, for when they leave school. One example of that is, is we're looking at the officiating class that the Ohio Department of Education has approved for credit so that those students that are interested in sporting, in sports, and maybe want to do some officiating, by the time they're done with that class, they would be certified in those sports. So that's just one example of, of a course we're looking at for next year. We're continuing with our Ultimate Warrior Program, which was a big success last year. We have some, some new folks that have joined the team to help our students get rewarded. Our athletic director, Mr. Perkins, has been very kind with some free tickets to events. The boosters have been very kind with some free, you know, food at the concession stand, things like that. But we're also, and, and, you know, continuing to partner with some of our businesses in the community. For, for example, tomorrow, we have a snow cone truck coming for homecoming week. So at lunch, if you want to use a punch to go out and get a snow cone, you can. Mr. Vincent, last year, you had asked about students who, who hadn't reached those, those requirements and what are we doing for them. One thing we're doing additionally this year is, even if a student didn't earn the card based on their fourth quarter performance, positive behavior referrals from our teachers can, can earn a card for a student. So let's say they have five teachers who input a positive behavior referral for that student. To us, that means that this year, they're taking care of their business, maybe even though they didn't last year. So that's one thing we have also started this year. Also, obviously, it's very important in PBIS to be recognizing and working with our teachers as well. So we're, we're starting a Teacher of the Month this year based on the contributions that our teachers are making with PBIS and their strategies and those types of things. And as always, we'll be, we'll be sharing out PBIS data during staff meetings so that the staff's aware of what's going on. And then lastly, one thing that we were starting to do this year is, we decided that, you know, we know we have a lot of really bright minds in our building and didn't feel like necessarily last year we utilized our, our staff as well as we could have. So this year, after our staff meeting, when we get done with like the necessary minutia of the, the first part of the meeting, we're splitting into four groups. Everyone's assigned to a group. We have a, a group that's working directly on MTSS, the data, what students need, how can we provide additional support, those types of things. We have another group of staff members that are working on PBIS and, and those types of things. We had a, a student experience group, so that group of teachers are working directly on how can we improve the student experience? And then we have a staff experience group, and that group of teachers, I'm, I'm the administrator that's working with that group, and our first meeting was great. I mean, they just came with all these great ideas of how we can connect with each other and things that they did at other buildings or from other school districts, just great ideas. So we're, we're really excited about that, so that monthly, we are meeting in those four phases to continue to look at data and inform our decisions. So with all that, we're off to a great start this year. Unfortunately, obviously, we had a few, a few tough incidents, but other than that, at the building, the, the, the kids seem to be doing well, and, and our staff seems to be pretty happy, so... Any questions?
No. I think it's great what you're doing with the Ultimate Warrior thing. Just being at the booster meetings and whatnot, I think that's a great way to get kids involved in their school and to build school pride. So that's just an extension of what's going on in the day, so I think that's great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good.
All right, District Report Card.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Just a reminder of our mission, vision, and district goals. Take that from here, but our student, we're doing well, but our student learning goal is to demonstrate expected growth for all subgroups as measured by the local report card. And I think that Tan and I are going to give a, a picture of really strong progress. So we're really, really proud of, of what our students and staff have accomplished this year. Okay, I'm not working on it yet.
Next slide.
Yeah. All right, so our overall rating as a district this year is four stars, meaning we exceed state standards. This is consistent performance for us. It is also important to note on this slide, our performance index score. This is a weighted average of all of our student scores on state tests. Our PI score is higher than pre-pandemic, and it continues to increase. It is above the similar district average, and our ranking compared to similar districts has improved. It is also important to note, I think, that last year, we improved our ranking in the state by going up 30 places in the state, which I think is very significant. In the area of achievement, we earned four stars, which again means we exceeded state standards. And achievement looks at, did our students meet the 80% proficient or higher benchmark? We met that 80% proficient or higher threshold in 5th grade ELA, US History, and Government. And I, we're, we're in striking distance in several other areas. We met, we were at 75% proficient or higher in 4th grade math, 8th grade science, Algebra I, and biology. We are also above similar district averages in 3rd grade math, 4th grade math, 5th grade ELA, 6th grade ELA, 6th grade math, 8th grade math, Algebra I, Biology, US History, and Government. We have shown improvements in 11 of 20 reported areas, including some very significant gains. In 4th grade ELA, our achievement improved by over 4%. In 6th grade ELA and Algebra I, we improved by over 8%. And in 6th grade math, we had a gain of over 10% since last year. So I think those are very significant. To keep moving in the right direction, it's important that we ensure students have opportunities to practice with the testing format so that they are as comfortable as possible when they sit down for the real thing. For example, this can look like using released test questions as warmups, structuring classroom assessments to mirror the state test, incorporating released reading passages into daily instruction, talking with kids routinely about what to expect on the test, and using readiness benchmark and checkpoint assessments throughout the year. In the area of progress, we earned four stars as well. Again, that is exceed state standards. And progress answers the question, did students grow as predicted? As a reminder, growth predictions are based on students' past performance. So to, to meet growth, students have to essentially maintain their place in line. For example, a student who scored previously in the 74th percentile in math must perform in the 74th percentile to meet growth for the year. We saw improvements in 4th grade math and 4th grade ELA, 5th grade ELA, ELA II at the high school, across all grade levels in math. We did see a decline in 5th grade science, 6th grade, and 6th grade ELA. It is also important to note that we, we do continue to struggle in 5th grade math, 6th grade ELA, and 7th grade math. But we are working with building administration to identify obstacles to growth and come up with a plan for improvement. In the area of gap closing, this is what I'm really, really proud of. We have improved from four stars to five stars. Only 29% of districts across the state earn five stars in gap closing. Gap closing answers the question, how well did we meet performance goals for groups of students in ELA, math, and graduation rate? And how well did we support English language... And how well did we support English language learners to increase their language proficiency, identify gifted students and provide gifted services, and reduce chronic absenteeism? We are very pleased to consistently earn the maximum points possible in, in chronic absenteeism, graduation rate, gifted student progress, English learner progress, and ELA achievement overall. And I want to point out that we are one of only 241 districts across the state to meet English language learner progress, which is very significant. In the area of math achievement, we missed achievement goals for, for our students of with disabilities and Asian students, but we're really, really close. We're like within 1% of the mark with both of those student groups. We're also very proud that we met math growth expectations for English learners and all students, and we met ELA growth expectations for English learners and Asian students. And those, those growth expectations are very, very hard to meet. You must demonstrate above expected growth to, to, to earn points in those areas. So those bottom two improvements are very significant. In the area of gifted, we did not meet the gifted performance index points or the gifted identification and service points, but I want to just give some context. Across the state, only 50 districts met the gifted service target and only 89 districts met the gifted performance index target. And we continue to look at, at those areas. While our gifted performance index continues to improve overall, we are struggling to grow some of our gifted students. The district team is digging deep into gifted data with building leadership to try to pinpoint obstacles and identify opportunities. We're looking at long-term solutions as well as small tweaks that we can make quickly so that we can impact the students that are sitting in those classrooms right now. In the area of early literacy, we maintain three stars, which is meet state standards. Now, this measure is a combination of three different metrics. So we look at students scoring proficient or higher on the third grade ELA test. We look at improving literacy, which is based on how many students were off track last year and moved to on track this year. So here we look at the grade bands like kindergarten performance to first grade, we look at that, first grade to second, second grade to third, and then third grade fall to third grade spring. And then the third metric is promotion to fourth grade. And just a reminder, the third grade reading guarantee is not really a thing anymore. It used to be that if a student did not pass that third grade ELA test, they were automatically retained. We're not allowed to do that anymore. We're not allowed to retain third graders just because they did not meet that third grade reading guarantee. In all three measures, we are showing improvements. For the third grade proficiency component, we're steadily increasing with 73.2% of our third graders scoring proficient or better. We've identified that writing is an area where we can get a lot of bang for our buck. And as the year progresses, third graders will take practice writing assessments within the state testing system. They will then be guided through the rewriting and editing processes and resubmit their revised responses for re-scoring so that they can see the impact of using strategies they've learned in class. For the improving literacy component, 39.8% of students who were previously off track moved to on track. So that's 137 out of 337 students moved to on track. This is definitely an area for improvement and we believe we've already implemented changes that are going to make a difference. For example, we have moved the screening window just a little bit later, which allows kids an extra week or so to adjust to the routines of the new school here before they're taking this really, really high stakes assessment. Also, as Ms. P. Aquario has described, the task was experiments with intentional grouping during second semester last year were very impactful and that strategy has continued to be implemented across the district this year. We're very pleased with, with, with those results. Also, as Ms. P. Aquario explained, it's important to emphasize that at the K3 level, teacher-based teams are focused on data and teachers are collaborating to identify skill gaps and determine appropriate tier-one classroom-based interventions with the support of primary literacy specialists, coaches, and administrators. This approach allows teachers to share best practices, learn from each other, and move out of isolation to tackle problems collaboratively. We are also in our second year of implementing the 95% core phonics program. As you might recall, the state requires that districts purchase an additional language curriculum this year to supplement that phonics curriculum. We are in the process of gathering feedback from teachers and working with coaches to evaluate curricula that are approved by the state, and I hope to come back to the board later this semester with a recommendation for how we should move forward. In summary, I'm super proud of the achievements and progress that we've made. I think they reflect our unwavering commitment to the academic growth and well-being of our students. And at this time, Mr. Tanchewski will discuss graduation and college and career.
Thank you, Mrs. Lywitz. When we look at our graduation, the trend, the graduation component, again, we were four stars. And what you're seeing, the four-year rate and the five-year rate, but the, it's rated on a weighted graduation rate, which is 95.3%, and that's 60% of the four-year graduation rate, 40% of the five-year graduation rate. So our, our rate remains strong in both four and five year. We are still above similar districts. Our, with this cohort, keep in mind that this is the class of 2023. This is the groups that's, that's being measured. The Southwest Licking Digital Academy was a part of this. Thirty-three students in that class, we had in that class, five of those students didn't graduate. Seventeen total didn't graduate. We had 308 out of 325 students did not graduate from this class. Now, this measure, in my mind, tells us more about the, the kids that didn't graduate than those who did graduate. So we have to look at that. We, we have so much demographic data. We, we can talk about gender, we can talk about socioeconomic status, we can talk about disability status, ethnicity, and things like that. We, we can see who and why these students are not graduating. And we have a ton of supports in place and to help monitor our at-risk kids. We identify these kids well before they enter high school. We have tier-one strategies, professional development for tier-one strategies that take place in the classroom. We have MTSS programs in, in all levels of buildings. We have school counselors, psychologists, behavior specialists, truancy programs, social workers. All of those systems are in place and we're doing everything we can to support these kids and make sure they graduate. Unfortunately, there are circumstances that are beyond our control. Now, we will take a look next year at the five-year rate and see where some of these kids are in terms of our five-year graduation rate. But we're not, it's not as if these kids fall through the cracks. We're doing all we can and will continue to, to do all we can to support them.
Mr. Tanchewski, we are, students with disabilities are allowed to take up to age 22, correct?
Correct.
However, though, we will get
We are, we do.
Get a negative mark if we let that child stay those extra two or three years past 18, correct?
Correct. In the, in the class of 24, there are currently three students that are taking advantage of that, that opportunity to stay till age of 23. Again, that's, that's just a function of what the state
Correct, okay.
Does for us.
I just wanted, so, you know, out of our, so many kids, it'd be, we want to make sure we're keeping track of ones that they don't have to graduate even though we
Absolutely, yeah. We, again, we, we know, we know where they're at, what they're doing, and well, some of them, some we can't track. Next is the attendance rate. Attendance rate for us over the past three years is, continues to improve. If you look, this is through 23 and 24, we've gone up to 93.1%. We're always looking at, we're currently looking at different ways to, to, to assess attendance before we hit those truancy thresholds. So one example was given today, maybe we're going to start looking at different points in time throughout the course of the year where Mr. Severino can do attendance checks and then kind of mesh those in with the, with the truancy thresholds. The next is chronic absenteeism. Again, we're trending down, which is great. It's on the decline. Mr. Severino continues to work with all the student, all the buildings and all the grade levels to make sure that's happening in home, I mean, home visits, meetings, and different kinds of support. I met with Mr. Brown and Mr. Severino this week and we're looking at, last week, and we're looking at different ways to kind of beef up progress monitoring and attendance and participation with the Southwest Licking Digital Academy. So hopefully, we'll see some results from that. The last area that I'm going to kind of touch on is the college, career, workforce, and military readiness component, which is not rated for this, for this report card. It'll start happening next year. We're not quite sure in terms of what impact this is going to have or how much it's going to be in relation to the other components. But right now, it's made up of basically 11, 11 pieces. It goes from ACT participation scores, honors, diploma, AP scores, industry credentials, earning 12 or more college credits, enlistment in the military, pre-apprenticeship, apprenticeship programs, proficiency on technical assessments, and then the Ohio Means Job readiness seal. This year, we were 45, we improved from 36% to 45%, which basically means that any student that earns at least one of those 11 components, and then all of them are divided by the total number of students. So for example, if what you're seeing up there, 148, 148 students earned at least one of those 11 components or categories, and that was divided by the total number of students in the class, which was 325. And we're looking at different ways to kind of implement some different strategies to get students more involved with that. I mean, the, the high school is setting out, putting together an honors diploma pathway, for example. They're doing, you know, we're doing more, we doubled our 12-point credentials. We doubled our 12-plus semester hours. And that, that piece is the college credit plus piece, meaning that you have to have at least, basically for 12 hours, you have to have at least four college credit plus classes per student. So that's, that's on the horizon. But, you know, I want to close with one thing. When we talk, and I said this last year, and I'll continue to say this. When we measure the success of the district, you don't measure it by that. You measure it by the success of your students when they become adults and how, what they become. They become firefighters, lawyers, doctors. They come back to the community and what they produce and the kind of citizens they, they become. And it's not, again, the report card doesn't measure that. We have to look at them once they come back and once they're out there in the world. Any questions?
Well said. Thank you. No, I figured it out.
I, I do have a few questions. Just real quickly, I know we got four stars. How close are we to 4.5? Do we know?
Go ahead, Melissa.
And you don't have to give this to me like in the moment. You can email it to me. It's not that I'm
We're very close.
Okay.
Overall rating. They can give you, they can give you an exact number, but very close.
Because I saw the threshold, 3.125, 3.125. So I was just kind of curious as far as that goes. The other one I noted was the high school geometry, but I know that that's an issue throughout the state. So I'm just, that is something we are addressing for, I mean, I know we're above the state average and state average is 20-something.
Yes, we are
So to me, that says there's something wrong with the test, but
Yes, we do believe that the test is not, it's got a lot of issues. But we are evaluating geometry curricula right now. Actually, on Monday, as part of our waiver day, all of our geometry teachers will be meeting with Mr. Cullen to kind of go over some possibilities of avenues we can pursue because we know this is an area where we need to work.
Okay. And then real quickly, for the younger kids, the diagnostic we use, is it MAP or I-Ready or is it both? I can't remember.
We use Acadiance. This is our first year using Acadiance for that on-track, off-track. Previously, we've used STAR, which is, is, is not a, a super accurate measure because at the first, or kindergarten and first grade levels, that test is read to them. And then when they hit second grade, all of a sudden, they have to read it themselves. And that's why we see a giant drop from first grade to second grade. We are using Acadiance for lots of different kinds of things and we're making a lot of instructional decisions in the classroom based on Acadiance. So I think that's just, it's a, it's a better measure.
Okay, I just got two more.
Okay.
Real quick. The gifted gap closure, I know we're exploring ways to get there. Is, are we close, do you think? Or is there still a lot more work to do to, to build that? And if you don't have an answer tonight, you can email me.
I think we're close.
Okay.
I, I think we're close. I can, I can get you more details, but I do think
I was just curious because looking at those numbers, they're extremely high. So when they're that high, it's hard to build.
The gifted performance index is, is very, very difficult to meet. You have to have about a 90, you have to rank about 97% in the state in order, in order to get those points for the performance index. And then as far as the gifted identification and service, we are expanding our gifted screenings and our gifted services, particularly in visual and performing arts. This is the first year that we've had a large number of students who are being able to be served for giftedness in, in visual arts at the high school level. So we're very, very happy about it.
Great. And then just my last thing is something that was brought up kind of last year, but it kind of glared at me when I was seeing it. So just this more, more of a comment than, than anything else. With the seventh grade math, I know last year I had some issues with us adding pre-algebra and seventh grade honors and all that because we had some gaps in Algebra I in the middle school. So Algebra I, we got 100% in the middle school. But we still have those two classes, but we still, we had less than expected growth in seventh grade math. So we are still servicing the general ed kids and doing something for them at seventh grade too, right?
We, we are.
Okay.
We absolutely are. We are looking at bringing in an, an outside consultant to work with fifth grade and seventh grade math in December.
And I would, just from my day job, seventh grade math is just like geometry as far as the, so I, that's neither here nor there. I just want to make sure that we got that general ed component for seventh grade.
Yep, we're working on it.
All right. Thank you.
All right, how about an update on Tascala Elementary?
Good evening. Dr. Perkins, Mr. Jones, and Board of Education, I'm honored to propose the name for our new school next year, Tascala Bridge Academy. And as you see, each letter in the word Bridge represents a very important element pertaining to student growth. And one of the most important ones is the letter B, building a family culture within the building. And that will begin when we start to put our staff together, both teachers and support staff. Because having that family culture is going to be critically important to the success of the school. We're going to be, we're going to partner with families and community to bridge the gap between student challenges and their potential. And we're going to do that through research-based instruction, rewards, incentives, and most importantly, praise, love, and compassion for our students. I'm very excited because one of the things that I, we talk about a lot is our goal is really to help our students outperform their expected outcomes. And as was mentioned by Mr. Tanchewski, you know, our goal is for them to, when they graduate, for them to go on and be successful citizens in our community. And it's going to take a lot of hard work and a lot of commitment, but I know we have people within the district and outside our district that will come in and be willing to do that. And I'm excited to serve both students within our district that we'll bring back to Tascala Bridge Academy, if you, you know, accept that name, and also serve Licking County students that need that assistance as well. Any questions? I guess the other thing to share with you, so, you know, we do meet multiple times weekly, building plans. And right now, the plan is for K to 5 to be autism students with autism and grade six to 12 to be ED students. And they'll be at separate wings in our building. And again, we're, we're actually going to, we're meeting about that on Monday and how that, how that will look. But we've, we've gone over and walked the building a couple of times. I get lost very easily, so it's very important for me to do, find my way around, but, so we're, you know, working on it. Any, any questions?
When are you going to start staffing?
Probably, you know, I think a little earlier rather than, than later. Typically, you know, you, you start staffing and, and putting out feelers and, and march typically when you start interviewing. Dan and I really haven't talked about that yet, but I think when we get back from Christmas break, we'll start reaching out to people and see what the interest level is here within the district and then also then, you know, outside our district and start interviewing. Because again, building that framework for that family culture in the building is going to be very important.
Yeah.
We want to have the right people that are going to be able to do that.
And there's a definite shortage in that area. And there's a definite shortage in that area right now, so...
So if you guys like the suggested name, we can add that on. Rick, write motion to...
No, I mean, they're okay. We don't necessarily have to vote on it unless they want to.
I love this personally. I think this is...
Yeah, I'm good with it. I think if only they had concerns about it, we should tell, yeah.
It'd be easier.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the update.
Teamsters Local 413, Southwest Licking Education Association? No? Need approval of the minutes from August 15?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Ziney?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Passes. Personnel consent calendar, six, nope, I skipped something, sorry. 5A financial report?
The most important thing.
I know, I'm so sorry. Can we get a motion?
It's on red.
Motion for 5A.
Roger's on red.
Second.
Included on the agenda is the executive summary for August 31st. We still don't have estimates in there, just actual numbers. We will have those starting September. Really big thing is, you know, overall, receipts are about 20% higher than they were last year. Part of it was the larger increase in property values. And the other part of it was, last year was the first year of Biennium, so we funded at the old formula for a while and then switched over to the new formula, you know, this year we were getting funded with the new formula, so there was a bump up because of that. Overall, it was a very routine month. Everything seems to be coming in okay, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Ziney?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Right now, how about six, motion 6A through L? So moved.
Second. So most is pretty, just common monthly hiring and some contract adjustment supplementals. But I did want to point out that Robin Krempel is on there, the Assistant Superintendent's Assistant for retirement, and then also back on there for the purpose of retire, we hire if the board does support that. We'd like to bring her back in that capacity for a period of time. So that's the only thing of significance.
Any questions for Dr. Perkins? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Ziney?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
All right, and motion for 7A and B?
Motion approval.
I'll second that. Mrs. For...
Mary Jo.
Mrs. Ziney, yes, for her certified supplemental. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Ziney?
Yes.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Oh.
It's for Mary Jo.
Mary Jo.
It's Mary Jo.
Oh, abstain, yeah.
Very good.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Nope, we're good, bud.
All right, that one goes. How about 8A and B, approval of volunteers? I'll pull out for Mrs. Spindler.
Motion approval.
Second. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Abstain.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Ziney?
Yes.
All right. Item 9A through E, do we need any of those separate or all together? Motion for 9A through E.
Second. So, Rick, do you want to talk about the policy?
Yeah. First policy is, it's a new policy, one we haven't had in the past, and it's really permissible policy. It deals with, you know, cash balance. So basically, the purpose of the policy is to state at what point that we will intervene, per se, in the cash balance. If it gets below 30 days, you're through different varieties listed, budget reductions, refs, whatever, new levy, and it just talks about the board will also, you know, support that. He'll be making changes to get us back to at least that 30-day cash balance. Obviously, we are right now north of 200-plus days, and we're doing fine. It shouldn't be an issue, hopefully, for foreseeable future. But I think it's good to have, just to support that, once we get to that point, we'll let you know and bring ideas to you on how to bring it back online. That's the first reading on that.
I know you, I know they didn't offer much assistance on this, so we appreciate you putting the effort in to write this policy for us.
Thank you.
And then, we have an additional seat at Empower for an outside placement. Do you want to speak on insurance renewal, Rick?
Yeah, so we're bringing back our insurance renewal for starting effective January 1st, 2025. To be honest, we had another rough year. I mean, we were, you'd want to be ideally, best-case scenario is 100% of your claims cost compared to what you paid in premiums, and we're running average about 116%. And it's kind of been that way for two years in a row. Last year, we took a 12% increase just because we had a cap last year. This year, we didn't have a cap. Originally, they proposed 17.8. We went out to market, and we had another company, Anthem, came in like 9.9. So they, there was a little bit of competition, so they brought theirs down to 12% as well as agreed to put a cap on next year as a maximum of 15%. You know, we never really had two bad years in a row, so this is kind of unique for us. So hopefully, it's, they're seeing some trend where it's getting better, but we've had some big cases. And also, there's a 97%, 100% contingency premium that for below 97% that we'll get some of that premium back. Again, we've done that in the past, and we did actually just insurance holidays, so hopefully, we get that and it runs better. But again, 12% means about the best we can expect. It wasn't, there really wasn't enough difference between 9.9% and 12% for a switch, you know, for employees. It was like $30 a month or less than, I think, actually, $8 a month. It wasn't a whole lot of money, so switching insurance is just not worth it.
Well, and we have the cap now.
And we have a cap now. We didn't have that guarantee next year. So this is all recommendation of the Insurance Committee. We talked with them.
Your Insurance Committee wanted to stay with the same...
Agrees, yeah. They wanted to stay. So that's administrators and also sleep members that are all in that committee. Dental was a 6% increase. This has been, we've had this guarantee in place like five years, so one year, six, next year, zero, six, zero. This is the last year of it. Dental also is running horrible, but it's a lot smaller number, but it's also well over 100%. Vision, same thing. It's, this is 100% employee-paid, but it's 12% increase. Again, it's running horrible, you know. A lot of it's the increase in pricing for supply, you know, different, everything they use, we use at home, same thing the different insurance companies use, and their providers and doctors and so forth. So, and then Anthem Life Insurance, we had a guarantee in place, and there's no increase in there whatsoever. So I asked the board, based on a recommendation of the Insurance Committee, to approve these renewals.
And then, our monthly resolution of practicality for those that aren't transporting. And then, lastly, our elementary furniture bid came about 65, a little shy of 65,000 under, so we were able to put in there some alternates that the teachers had previously requested. So that was also good news.
All right, any questions? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Ziney?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Item 10A and B, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Again, donations, we always appreciate those. As you saw, there's some significant ones for robotics there.
Yeah, there is.
So that's awesome. And then, statements of purpose, as we continue to get these, we'll put them on the board for approval for various student activity accounts within the school district.
Any questions? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Ziney?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
So coming out shortly, you'll start to see the battle abroad is right around our corner in the beginning of October. So they'll be doing the food drive again this year, which we won last year against heights, so hopefully, we continue that this year. We'll have the blood drive, and then you can look for the spaghetti dinner as well at the Nutcracker. So just kind of be on the lookout for those things. A huge congratulations, if you haven't seen yet, that we have a national merit semifinalist at the high school. Marim, I'm not sure if it's Malin or, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly, but that's incredible for both that student and the school district. So wanted to point that out. Wanted to share that the task force met again last week. We continue to have discussions around facilities, future growth, and district needs. We'll meet again at the end of October, and then I'm hoping to have a presentation to the board at the November meeting. So just kind of wanted to continue to update you that we are meeting regularly and having those conversations and plans, and hope to share updates with the board as a whole in November. And then, let's see, let's do my, go ahead, Jeff, can you put my compass up, please? And then, this is the community compass that will be going out tomorrow. So just a few highlights. Wanted to share that, once again, we had, we continue to use, used to be cooperative strategies, now it's Woolpert. I know those numbers are, that's hard to see up there in the board. But anyways, the projected enrollment for the 23-24 school year was 5,012 students by Woolpert, and our actual enrollment in May was 5,015. So not sure how much more accurate you can get. Oh, thank you. Good job, Jeff. Then that, I also included in there, kind of just to help, you know, familiarize the community with what's involved when Woolpert is making, you know, is doing our projections, you know, the historical enrollment, census data, resident live birth data, and building permits. Also included in there, an increase of 856 students since the 2015 school year. And then, just did a little chart on the top right that kind of shows where we're projected five and 10 years from now, so you can see where the growth is coming. Do you mind scrolling down, Jeff, for me? Thank you. And then, everyone, I'm sure you've seen, if you haven't seen the building, you've seen the dust. Drayton Hall going up on 310 and 40 across from Cumberland. So that's, you know, the first part of that development with the apartments being built. So I'm sure most of the community has seen this. But if not, we'll put it out there and share, I like to share each of the developments coming, so everyone knows where the growth is at. I feel like if you're currently driving through our community, I mean, if you're not up at 310 Forest Ridge, there's Royal Lakers over there on Smoke. I mean, it's coming everywhere. So, and then, also, I just thought this visual was super cool. It shows you how big that South Fork Elementary is when you look at that from the back of the courtyard.